This is our regular meeting of Wednesday, October 1st, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask you to join me in a pledge of allegiance to begin the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Brian, may we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Hager.
Present.
Mr. Epping.
Present.
Mr. Ritchie.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
And Mr. Zerr.
Yes.
Great. So we do have quorum.
Morocco's name on it, right?
Good. Gentlemen, we have an agenda in front of us. It's posted on the website. I have one review comment. Are there any review comments for the agenda? I noticed as I was going through it in case number, the second case, case number 25-015, there's a request for three total variances. I was going through the details of it, and I think it was inadvertently entered wrong in terms of the area request in both the first and the third, where they're asking for a 3.163 square foot lot variance and a 3.005 square foot lot variance. When you do the math, it should actually be a 3.163 acre variance. C2 is a five acre minimum, and so they're asking for area requests. It's a substantial typo, inadvertent typo. So I apologize if the applicant is here, but my recommendation would be that we correct that notice correctly for the public and table that until next month. Make that agenda modification unless people.
Which one are you talking about?
Number two.
One and three require acre, not square.
That's correct. Case number 25-015, three variances, the first and third were typed incorrectly.
I'll make a motion to remove case 25-015 from the agenda tonight.
Is the applicant here?
No.
Nope. So I did talk earlier to Brian. Perhaps Brian, you had notified them?
I did not, but they've kind of been silent throughout this process, so.
Okay. All right. So we'll renotice that. I guess check with the applicant to make sure they still want to go forward with it since they weren't here. We'll renotice that and then ideally have it on next month's agenda. Alan, you made a modification or you're up to the agenda. Do we have a second?
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. So we have an agenda. We have three items on the agenda. Before we get to those items, we have the first item is public comment. Is there anybody in the audience?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
I thought you did.
He just moved to approve or to remove the case to you.
I apologize. Okay.
That's okay.
Let's do that then.
Okay.
I'll support.
So I didn't realize there's two parts, so thank you for clarifying that. All in favor of the modified agenda?
Aye.
And now we have an agenda. Before we move into our new business, we have a public comment. If there's anybody online, it doesn't look like it, or anybody in the audience would like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda tonight, now would be the time. Anybody here is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move right into new business. The way we do this is we've got three different cases. We'll call them one at a time. I'll call the first case. I'll outline the variances that are being sought. We'll ask the applicant to come up to the room, or I'm sorry, up to the podium, introduce yourself, give us your name and address, and then just kind of walk us through your application. We'll have some questions. We'll open it up to the board for comment. We'll then open it up to public for comment. Ultimately, we'll try and make some type of resolution. Before I get to Sir, are you here for the second case?
Yes, I am. Sorry, I was running a little behind in traffic.
Not a problem and not as sorry as we are. We reviewed the case, and unfortunately, it was inadvertently advertised incorrectly.
Do we know that the advertisement is the same as what's on the agenda?
Yeah, it is.
It is? Okay.
Yeah. And in two of yours, you're asking for a lot area variance or deviation. It's advertised as a square foot. It should be an acre. So it's a substantial difference. For example, in the first one, it was advertised as 3.163 square feet. It should be 3.163 acres.
And then the township that had made that mistake?
That's correct. It was made inadvertently when it was published and in the agenda. We're obligated to advertise things accurately for the public in case anybody from the public would want to come and discuss it. And so we're not able to move forward with it when it was advertised with that much of a variance in it. So apologize for that. We'll immediately readvertise it. It won't cost any more money. You'll be placed, assuming you would like to be, you'll be placed on the agenda for next month, and we'll move forward at that point.
Yeah, we can table until next month.
It has been, yeah. Does the applicant get a copy of the notice we sent to the neighbors?
Yeah.
Okay. So you would have got a copy of this notice as well?
Well, I'm representing the person that's on there, so I'm not actually the applicant. I'm representing the applicant, so he may have gotten interested in coming.
Okay. Well, then you'll be able to let him know that he had a copy of it to review.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
So, yeah, so again, feel free to coordinate with Brian if you have any additional questions. We'll plan on having it on the agenda next month advertised with that correction.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks. Have a great night. All right. With that, I will call case number 25-012. Chris Martin, petitioner, requesting a 15-foot side yard variance from section 4.09 and table 4.09 in order to construct a new home at the southwest corner of Sashaba and Pine Knob Roads, which is an R1R single-family, I'm sorry, yeah, R1R rural residential district. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Come on up to the podium. Give us your name and address. Also, gentlemen, on your way out, if you haven't done so already, if you could write down your name and address on the sheet at the door there just as we transcribe the minutes. We want to make sure we get everything correct.
Okay. Thanks.
How are you tonight?
Good. How are you?
Good.
It's Chris Martin. And what was the other thing you wanted me to say?
Your address?
9937 Pine Knob Road.
Perfect. Thank you. So you're requesting a 15-foot side yard variance to construct a new home. If you could just walk us through the application. We've got your drawings and the packet, but we just want to try and understand what the, why it needs that variance.
Absolutely. So I've got about two and a quarter buildable acres. I do have a little bit of wetland, which causes a 25-foot setback on the north side of the property, pushing me to the south. And it's just, there's not a good fit with the septic everything to move the house anywhere else on the property the way it was designed.
So in the R1R, the typical side yard setback would be 50 foot. You're asking for a 15-foot variance, meaning that the home on the southern side would be 35 foot from the property line?
Correct. Yes.
And I guess I'm going through, you're going to be on well and septic?
Yep. Well and septic.
And they show those on the site plan?
Yes.
Can you walk us through the home? Because I noticed that it's got a driveway on both sides of the garage. And so you supplied detailed elevations. It looks like it's got an upper and lower garage.
Yes, sir. So in order to have the main level garage, which is, you know, the first floor, I was going to have to build a foundation and fill it with dirt. And so I'm essentially getting a free additional garage, just putting doors on it instead of filling it with dirt.
Right.
And so that's the purpose for it. That's why we went that route.
Okay. All right. I'll bring it to the board here. Ask for any questions. We'll go from there. Alan, do you have any questions?
I noticed on your septic system, is this an engineered septic?
No, we do not need an engineered septic.
So the county's giving you a permit with the primary and secondary?
I haven't pulled the permit yet. I was waiting on this, but I have had, KEEPS Engineering did a preliminary review of it, and they said they don't believe I'm going to need a, as well as the county inspector has been out. I just haven't pulled that permit officially yet. And they both said that it shouldn't need engineered septic. We dug five holes and it perched well on all five holes. And so they, you felt that we were going to be good. They weren't going to have to add the additional.
That was my only question at this time.
All right. Mr. Wallace?
So you bought this four years ago or so?
Yeah. Yeah.
With the notion that you were going to build a home on it?
Yes, sir.
So, but you knew the limitations at the time that you bought it?
Not, no, not exactly. I didn't know about the wetland. We did a wetland delineation and found out, I didn't know that I had the additional 25-foot setback on that side originally when I bought the property. And so when we designed it, I thought I was fitting within the allowable space. And so unfortunately, that wasn't the case. I-
So how did you determine the extent and boundaries of the wetland?
I had a, I had a company, I believe it was ASI, come out and do a wetland delineation on the property.
I still relatively knew, Mr. Chairman, too, the ZBA. I don't know, but whether in a situation like this, you know, if this was all high and dry, we wouldn't be chatting about it. I'd hate to do this now and have somebody in the future come back and say, "Well, I need to fill these wetlands." Would you ever prevent that in some way? Make it conditional? Call for a conservation easement? Anything like that?
In my time on the board, I don't ever remember asking for conservation easement. It's certainly something that could happen. You know, to fill a wetland in any case would violate more rules than what-
And I've already spoken with Eagle, the ones that determine the wetland. And so there's no intention. They told me what I wouldn't be able to do already. There's also wetland on the lakeside. We discussed that fact. I can put a boardwalk in, but I can't remove or uproot any of the stuff there. So as far as I'm concerned, I have no desire or no intention of filling that in later.
Well, it's not even a matter of you doing it. It's someone down there. Yeah.
But try and understand. You're asking that question because you're worried about the future of somebody overriding the state? Or, I mean, this is a state-controlled border, if you will?
Yeah, I understand the state's control. The state can blow in the wind, too, and things change. And who knows what you could go to the state and get a permit for. I don't know. I don't-
Isn't the 25-foot a township?
Yeah, we have a 25-foot natural feature setback.
That's our ordinances.
That's an administrative approval if we were to, if they were to encroach into there. Typically, we don't approve any grading at all in that area. The only time we typically approve that is for deck posts and something that's very non, you know, very little impact.
So in this case, Mr. Wallace, your point is there's the wetlands, and then there's a 25-foot parallel line, and the applicant is respecting, you know, who knows what will happen in the future, but the applicant is respecting the, not only the wetlands, but that 25-foot buffer. And I guess the northern edge of that lower driveway comes up to that 25-foot.
Yeah, and that's what forces the house south to be able to access that garage. We have to have that driveway and pushes everything to the south.
So the natural feature adjustment could be with the driveway?
We don't know what the grading impact would be. So, I mean, we wouldn't know till we actually get the building permit and really study it.
I'll see how you could, I'll see how you could put the driveway without grading into that 25-foot area myself. But I guess it depends on the topography. If it was higher there, I guess you could stop, but.
It does. The topography shows that it drops down, you know, as you would expect going towards a wetland. It would also bring it closer to Sashaba, right on the curve there. Mr. Martin, have you spoken with your neighbor, who I guess would be the impacted neighbor?
Yes, sir. I spoke with Jerry, and he had no, he didn't speak tangy issues with me. He did question, you know, he asked the normal questions, you know, the house, the size of the garage, pretty much the questions you've asked. He did ask about those, but he hasn't shared with me any issues. I believe he come up and spoke at one point to township.
And it looks like he has an accessory structure, a barn or garage, that presumably is that 50 foot from the property line. So-
His is about, it's about 40 feet from the property line.
Forty foot from the property line, and then his house is further south from that.
Yep.
Brian, have we heard from the neighbor or from any other applicant or residents?
I've spoken several times with the neighbor to the south. He had no objections to it. He just had a lot of clarifying questions that he wanted answered at the time.
Specifically to the setback or just in the house?
Yeah, just like, why is the house configured the way it is and things like that? So, and it's like, that's not for me to comment on. So that's really been it.
Did I cut you short, Ron? Did you have more questions?
No, no, I guess. I just, my only heartache is how you can grade that driveway and not encroach on the 25-foot setback, so.
I can do it with a retainer wall or decorative concrete or something and come up and then-
So that's the northern driveway?
Correct. Correct. At this, here's the 25-foot setbacks.
Yeah.
But he's asking for 15 feet. So if we ask him to move it 15 feet, there won't be much of an entrance pad right to the lower garage.
Typically, a side load driveway would be about 23 feet. So if you're to shift it north 15 foot, that driveway, you know, would either be non-functional for a side load, or it would potentially encroach into that, not into the wetland, into the setback, natural feature setback by eight feet.
And is it, am I understanding that it's this northern most drive that is the one that goes to the lower garage?
That's correct. My, and I'm still open, certainly for discussion, my initial thoughts are, you know, it's an unusual lot. It's an encumbered lot by two wetlands, and then the natural feature setbacks, not necessarily different than any other property that has wetlands on it. It's, you know, it's unusually shaped to start with. I suppose an applicant could come in and ask for a variance request to encroach into the natural wetland setback, and that, I guess that's administrative review, and that may or may not be approved. In this case, shifting it south, shifting the house south, sounds like the neighbor doesn't object to that. The neighbor's outbuilding is still a great distance, and then their house is further south than that. So it's not as though we're pushing a home right up against a neighbor. The township does value and generally protect its natural feature setbacks. We've done that in other properties. And so in my mind, because of the topography, because of the access to both sides of it, it seems reasonable to me to consider a variance shifting the building 15 foot to the south, with the understanding that the trade-off may be encroaching on that natural feature setback.
I didn't get the last part of that. How would it encroach on a natural feature setback?
If the southern, if the northern driveway, the lower driveway was to still remain, it would push eight foot into the natural feature setback. With the way it's drawn now is it stays out of it.
And what would cause it to go into it? I'm sorry.
Moving the whole house, moving the whole system, the driveway, the house, everything 15 foot to the north.
You're talking about this way?
Oh, why would you move it to the, oh.
I'm assuming north is up straight up to the whole block.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the variance, that's that variance there, right?
Yeah. So basically, we'd shift the whole thing 15 foot towards Sashaba. That would take it out of the need for a side yard setback to the bottom, to the south. But it potentially could shift that driveway into the natural feature setback, which would either require a variance or some type of an administrative review.
And it doesn't help to move the whole thing further southwest?
No. There wasn't, from what I understood, there wasn't, because there's the 75 foot and then the 25, there's the wetland on the backside, too.
Right.
So I'm not sure.
But you're a long way away from that yet, though.
Well, I was, my first thought was, as long as the neighbor didn't have a problem, I was not going to have too much of a problem. But I want to talk a little bit about two things. One is your schedule. And I know that is not a practical difficulty that we should be thinking about. But this was in front of us on and off a couple of times. What's going on? Are you in a hurry or?
I, so the only issue, and I applied in July. The reason you didn't see it in August was because when I got the site plan, it was given directly to the architect, and he mislabeled it originally that we only needed a 12-foot setback.
Ah.
So I called and requested, did we change it for the 15? I was supposed to see it in September. And that didn't, that wasn't able to happen because there was, I don't know in, I don't know where in the paperwork it says.
And then my second conversation is more along the lines of what we think could happen. I mean, you can make these driveways with a, I forget what they're called, but they're basically cement blocks with holes in them.
Permeable pavers.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, would the town, have we ever moved into a little bit of the setback feature with something that's, you can drive on, but it just absorbs all the water?
Well, the issue is moving the dirt and pulling up all the vegetation in that 25-foot setback. That's, you know, and we have to weigh it against several standards in the ordinance in order to approve something.
But I can't see it. It looks, I mean, it looks like not much would have to change on an elevation. Is it my reading?
Well, I think there's a-
You still have to grade when you use, I'm familiar with the product you're talking about. I had a client that used that to get around some issues in Bloomfield Township. But you still have to grade to get to use something like that.
Right.
Right. Yeah, we would, we would, I don't know, scar or upset. According to the topography, if you go to the north side where the W is by the house, it's 1041.1, and this lower garage is 1041.5. So it's relatively flat.
Yeah.
Through there. There won't be, there'll be limited grading.
I don't think that that's unreasonable. I will, I'll say the question- I, I don't think that that's unreasonable. I, I will, I'll say the question. We're a, you know, an impaneled commission of five individuals trying to make decisions. I'm hesitant to, unless we truly think it's, it's the right thing, to ask the planning department to administratively make a determination on something that they may or may not typically do, you know, if, I think, I, I think we as a, well, I don't know if we do have the, the authority to, to force it north and then tell them they're able to encroach on that wetland setback, but.
Well, we certainly have in the past made approvals conditional, and I'm struggling with, you know, dream home with two garages now. I know there's a lot of people that, you know, that is a dream for. I can't imagine that's true for everybody. I don't know.
Right.
But that's really what we're dealing with here is the second garage.
I agree.
Yeah. It's not the house really that would be reduced in square footage. It would be.
Access to the garage.
Yeah, the ability to have the second garage.
Or typical access, right, the twenty-three foot. You could still.
Typical access.
You could still, you know, if my math is right, you'd still have about fifteen or sixteen foot that you could get to the driveway. It may just be, you know, hard to swing and escalate in there.
Or a boat or jet skis or any of the things.
I think in terms of the practical difficulties that, you know, this isn't a condition created. In fact, the township, we've had this issue before. I think this lot is substantially smaller than is typical for the zoning and, and therefore, there's a difficulty with this small lot conforming to dimensional requirements that were meant for a bigger lot. I get that. I think that trigger is, is met in that respect, but I, I guess I'm concerned with the fix and concerned with preserving that wetland. And it seems to me we've done approvals before that are conditional, whether that condition is go get a concert, go give a conservation easement, or it's just conditional. You shall not, in the future, alter these wetlands in any way, shape, or form.
I'm trying to, I understand the notion of a conservation easement, but are you suggesting that the conservation easement or the condition would be a conservation easement and permission to encroach to build that driveway? I'm not sure what, what the condition is.
Well, the condition, it is just a different form of conserv-, that's a matter of form, where conservation easement would be a formal document. You'd give it to the land conservancy or the township or both. There's precedent for that, but the other would just be in our motion. We would say this approval is granted on the condition that the wetlands are not invaded now or in the future.
Okay, that, that helps me. So you, what you're saying is that if, if potentially there is a motion to approve as applied, that, that condition may be put on it as opposed to move the house and then we'll put conditions on it to allow you to encroach.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
I'm not sure that, of, again, I'm not sure about the fix in terms of a second driveway. That's a, you know, having that sort of set up with your garage is extraordinary.
Right.
It's not the sort of thing most people dream about.
But regardless, we have the ability to put a condition on to preserve future encroachment?
Yes, I, that's my point.
Agreed.
When Sue Julian has been before this board in the past, they brought up about the conservation easement that's at Clintonville and maybe Rhodes, and they were willing to relinquish that because it didn't connect with anything that they had other than that one conservation easement right there. If they put a loop in, an entrance and an exit for seventy-five, they would relinquish that thing. There are more, the way that she was explaining it, I think you'd have to contact them, what they're doing now. I know when I did the subdivision out in Davisburg, all of the conservation easement, and it's very expensive to do these, because of the legal descriptions that you have to delineate, all tied in with the Chiwasi Basin Park, where on the north side. So every house, the easement led right to that. So I wouldn't get involved with it with this board. If township wanted to do something, that, I think that would be up to them. We have, we have in the past, on Waterford Road, the subdivision that's at maybe on Waterford Road where the stream goes through from the, all the water that comes through here goes down.
In the Gulf Coast.
We have, it came before this board where they wanted to put the septic replacement, septic field in that area and it was allowed.
Yeah.
That was part of the setback of the house and everything else and it all added into that twenty-five feet natural features.
Well, again, I'll, I'll speak, what I'm thinking is, we have an unusual shaped piece of property, I think, that can be agreed on. It, it not only is encumbered by wetlands and natural feature setbacks, but it kind of bows in in the middle, so even moving that home to the west, it doesn't, it doesn't get it to any wider point of a buildable envelope. So I think even if we slid it thirty, forty, fifty foot to the west, the, the envelope doesn't get substantially bigger, that it would solve that problem. In my opinion, we've got a neighbor who hasn't objected, has, has been engaged and has asked questions. They've got an outbuilding between this building and it, I know it's fairly wooded from where, when I was up there. To me, that's the lesser of an encroachment into a natural feature is only because, again, the township, you know, I think has a track record of saying, hey, those are important to us. We've got it specifically called out in our ordinance in a few places and it seems like, you know, environmentally, that may be more valued from an environmental point of view than, than that fifteen foot to the neighbor, which still has a substantial distance to their outbuilding and their house.
So just to put it in terms of the triggers that we're supposed to consider, one of the things here is of a personal nature, and I'm harping on the second garage, the lower garage notion, so I don't know how we overcome that. And what I said before, I think we have some of the triggers we're supposed to hit, but I'm not sure about the cure for that very reason, because one of them is, is it personal in nature and it seems to me that it is.
Well, it's a design, yeah. It's clearly, it's, it's a design feature. If, if there wasn't an elevation, it, it, you know, this may be one of fewer than a half a dozen homes in our township that have a dual access garage, so it, it truly is an unusual self-created design feature. If it wasn't there, the home could be moved fifteen foot to the north and we wouldn't be here.
And the other reason for that garage is just, I'm not going to have anywhere else to put any accessory buildings really. I mean, the well, it's, the property, the way it's laid out, if I, I can't put anything in front of the house, I'd have to come back and ask you guys, so I can't do an auxiliary building in front. If I put it in the back, I'm still going to need that driveway to go along that side to get back there because the, on the south side will be the septic, so I can't bring in on the other side of the property driveway wise.
That, to access it. That then becomes, sort of, if we're relying on that, and that's another condition, we should be putting on approval if we're going to approve.
As far as unable to build the future outbuilding.
Yes, right. No accessory buildings.
The, I have a thought. Oh, how, how many square feet is the house?
The footprint's nineteen hundred and fifty.
Nineteen hundred and fifty, okay.
And it's two stories.
That's the, just the footprint.
I know, but it's two stories.
Yeah, it's the, the living room's a two-story. It is a two-story event, so it's about thirty-two hundred square feet is the overall size of the house, above ground, above ground.
Well, let's, let's see if we can move forward here. I'd like to suggest that in case twenty-five dash oh one two, that the petitioner, Mr. Chris Martin, we grant him a variance of the fifteen foot yard setback due to the practical difficulty of the wetlands on two sides of the property and, and the house is not excessively large for that size of property. I'd like to suggest, we would expect a placement verification once your, your house or your footings are put in, basement, whatever the setup is.
Okay.
And that, there's a condition that whoever owns this property now and in the future, that a, that a accessory building that's not attached is not permitted?
Why is attached or unattached make a difference?
Maybe they could find a, a spot to put something that meets all standards.
In, in my mind, I think the definition would be an accessory structure by its definition is detached and attached accessory structure would essentially become an addition.
Yeah, I don't think we should be making that distinction because then we're saying the dream home's gotten even bigger if it's attached.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
So I, I, I would, say no accessory. I would just flat say no accessory. That was my intention when I brought it up. I'd like to say no encroachment.
Let's have a second and then we'll take any suggestions.
Did you mention the natural feature setback?
I'll, I'll put a second just for purposes of discussion.
Perfect.
Brian?
I guess I'd like to see no encroachment on the, on the twenty-five foot setback to cons-, you know, conservation setback.
Natural features.
To include that in the, in the.
Yes. You would add that to your motion?
Yes, and we're saying specifically any structure including the driveway.
Well, no encroachment period, I think is, not only no, no structure, but no encroachment. It's a broader term. I'm curious as to whether Brian's getting all this down.
Did we settle on the no accessory structure?
I think we did.
No accessory.
Just flat, no accessory structure.
Period.
Okay. I've got everything.
Okay.
Placement verification, no encroachment on the natural feature setback and no accessory.
The other thing I would suggest it, with the permission of the person making the motion, is that we make a finding that, that this particular lot is small for the nature of the zoning and there's a practical difficulty then for the smaller lot conforming to the dimensional requirements of larger zone areas.
Sure.
I just think it's important that we.
Yeah, it really explains in detail, I think, and I think it's a good idea.
Any additional discussion on the motion? You've accepted those two second amendments?
We can formally make them as amendments, but I, I would move to add those two items as amendments, the finding with respect to the nature of the zoning, the no, flat, no accessory building and flat, no encroachment in the, in natural wetlands setback. That would be my motion to amend if there's a second.
I'll support that.
All right. So we should vote on the amendment first?
All right. Motion on those two amendment, or three amendments, I guess, three clarifications.
One amendment with three points.
Three points. No accessory structure, no encroachment and.
The fi-, the finding, the finding that, that this lot is dramatically smaller than the, the zoning and therefore, the dimensional requirements really weren't meant to fit this lot.
Good. We're all clear on that motion? Brian, if we can have a roll call, please?
Fortunately, this is all on video, right?
Yes.
Mr. Auger?
Yes.
Mr. Eppink?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mr. Zurich?
Yes.
Mr. Auger?
Yes.
Mr. Martin, congratulations. You've got an approval on the requested variance with obviously the conditions that township takes very seriously. Mr. Zurich mentioned field verification or footing verification. Work with the building department on that and really what that means is when we grant variances, they're literally right down to the inch and so we don't like seeing inadvertent mistakes or whatever happens and all of a sudden that home is one foot or one inch or two foot closer. So it's important to us as a community, so if you'd help with that process in all the obviously building permits, we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And I hope you get your septic permit.
Yeah, he's, he said that's good to go.
You'll find out.
We'll find out the hard way.
Great. Thank you very much. Do you have any other questions for us?
No.
Appreciate it. Thanks. All right, moving on, as we said, case number two, twenty-five dash zero one five was tabled to the next meeting, so we'll move on to case number twenty-five dash zero one six. Benjamin Hallway, petitioner requesting two variances. The first is an eight point one six foot, which is eight point eight feet, two inch front yard variance from Drayton Road, and the second is a twenty-three point nine one or twenty-three and eleven inch front yard setback variance from Pelton Road, both from section four point zero six D, table four point zero six, in order to remodel an existing home which is on a non-conforming lot of record, which is located at five zero one zero Drayton Road, which is an R one A single-family residential district of our township. Good evening.
Evening.
How are you? Give us your name and your address, please.
Benjamin Hawley. Address is five zero one zero Drayton Road.
Thanks, Mr. Hawley. And as the application says, you've got an existing home?
Yes.
Right at the corner of Pelton and Drayton?
Correct.
The existing home or existing lot is a, is a lot of non-conforming, a record lot of non-conforming. You are adding an addition on to it and you can tell us about the addition, the other improvements, and if you can walk us through those dimensional requirements or I've got some notes on that as well.
Okay. So I guess I have two front yards, they call it.
Correct.
So what I'm asking to do is to extend towards the backyard. I'm not going to, I, I'm not trying to go further towards the Pelton Road front yard. I just want to extend towards the backyard, but the new structure obviously wouldn't be within the setbacks of a front yard, typical front yard setback. So what I'm asking is, this is the, the new picture, right? So, so the, the new garage area is what I'm asking to build. It's not going to go any further than the existing house already is as far as a setback towards the Pelton Road. So, and I do have a question. I don't know if I can ask this question now.
Please.
I, I included adding overhangs because there's no overhangs on the house, so on the front setback, which would be Drayton Road, I was told that I don't need to actually ask for that setback variance change?
Correct.
Because we're not changing the foundation.
That's right.
Okay, so I, I only need to ask for the Pelton Road setback if I can, I would like to be able to build a garage. I have a very small garage as it is now that it's not even, it's not usable or can't even fit a car in it, basically. So I'm wanting to add another garage next to that and get rid of the existing garage, make it a, it's going to be a bedroom. And I want to have a, basically a usable garage that I can park two vehicles in and just use it for storage and, you know, so.
Okay. And the architecture and the materials are going to be similar? It looks like you're actually going to make some architectural improvements to the house itself that'll tie it all together?
It's, it's extremely dated, old siding, old roofing. I want to replace all that also, which is going to be a permit that I'm going to ask for after I get the variance approval for the garage. I'm going to actually do the entire house with newer updated siding, do the entire roof to make sure everything matches, updated roofing materials, so.
Great. So what's interesting is you're on what the township calls a non-conforming lot of record, which means the existing house, no, nothing to do with the new garage, the existing structure probably predates our ordinance.
Yeah.
And so, interestingly, the new garage does not throw, the, the existing house, which will remain in its location, are the, is. Um, and so, interestingly, the new garage, um, does not throw, the, the existing house, which will remain in its location, are the, is causing the two variance requests. The new garage is actually sitting three foot further back off of Pelton than the existing house does.
Yeah, yeah.
So, to a certain extent, what we're doing here, as, as you come in with an application, the township, uh, does a good job of looking at the entire parcel and says, hey, is there anything here that predates the ordinance, or maybe wasn't caught in an earlier variance or, or something like that? My assumption is, is that this is probably just predates the ordinance, and so, really, what we're looking at are two variances, technically on the existing house, the, the proposed garage, uh, doesn't make worse any of those, um, current dimensional conditions. In fact, it, it actually sets back. It's also a little unusual about Pelton Road, and really even, uh, Drayton, is the right-of-way is unusually large.
Yeah.
You've got thirty-five foot, so your, your front yard is actually pretty big.
Yeah.
It's just where that property line is.
Yeah, but unfortunately, where my yard starts is like, I think it's twenty-something foot off of that. It's, it's a really large yard when you look at it, but it's not according to your...
On vapor.
Yeah.
Right. So, um, again, in my opinion, I think that this, um, uh, is a good way to clarify some existing conditions, uh, to properly record them, uh, on, as it relates to your property, but the garage and the additional improvements don't, uh, make worse the existing conditions as it relates dimensionally in my mind.
So, the building of the garage isn't actually, wouldn't actually... Is not gonna be, uh, making either of these issues worse, like, because it's a non-conforming lot?
Correct.
Of record.
But does the new porch, overhead porch, make the condition look a little worse? From a dimen-, just from a dimensional point of view? I mean, that's what, that's what we're aim, that's what we're shooting for now, right? I mean, I'm not saying I have a major concern, but...
Dimensionally.
That what we're, what we're gonna ask the applicant is, that front porch can't go more than what he's showing.
Oh, so, I see. I missed that that was an issue.
And then I don't, and then I don't know how we, you know, from a housekeeping point of view, I don't know how we strike the variance number one off, uh, the first variance off. Do I have that right, off a Pel-, uh, off a Dr-?
I don't think you do strike it, because from the ordinance point of view, it's still required.
Okay.
He's not making any changes on that side.
Okay.
It's an existing condition.
So we can just approve it?
Correct.
Can you scroll down to the, art that shows the covered porch? I think it's the next slide down, here.
I thought you were cantilevering there?
Yes, yeah, there's no, 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 anything going in, the trusses are gonna be engineered to cantilever that porch.
So that, that's why...
So he doesn't go into the ground?
Correct.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be a factor, the front yard.
Okay. So we're back to just approving the way the house is now?
Correct.
And it's because he wants to improve the home?
And it looks like a nice improvement.
That he could be a violation.
That he caught our attention.
But it's on ours.
Well, it's not even on us, uh, there is no mistake ever made, we've seen this many, many times, that when, um, you know, there's, there's, especially on the southern end, around Oliver Lakes, there's an awful lot of non-conforming lots of record, um...
And if this were a vacant lot, it wouldn't be.
That's, that's correct.
You'd have to conform.
They would have to conform.
Right.
Well, to a point.
Or would request a variance.
We've had a lot of, uh, non-conforming lots of record, Fadera, Round Lake, um, down to the south of this gentleman's house, uh, down on Mayers, and those, we had little lots, little narrow lots, and they couldn't, uh, come up with this setback, sometimes five feet and five feet, depends on the, depends on the lot and the situation.
I know, if you see those Bigfoots down in Birmingham, they seem to be, put anything on to anything.
But they do, in that scenario, they do come back for variance, even if it's a vacant lot.
Yes, but for this case, there's, there is, the practical difficulty is, he owns a house that is predated to our current standards. In, in my opinion, we should accept his request.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion, I, in case twenty-five dash one-six, that we grant the petitioner his two total variances based on the practical difficulty, that it's a house that was built before the current standards, and we would, uh, not need a placement verification, or...
Sure, why not?
Why? We're gonna make him spend money on that?
All of a sudden he comes in, built on a bigger garage that's closer to the road?
Oh, uh, uh, well, I'm not telling him how to build the garage, I don't think.
I think in that scenario, the building department would know that he's...
Violated his own...
Permitted, and when they review the plans, they'll, they'll, you know, determine if it comes further than that.
What you have traditionally saw it as an as-built, right?
Uh, on new footings, absolutely. I'm questioning whether we wanna make this applicant spend money on a footing that's not moving.
Okay, but there are new footings for the garage.
But I don't...
I'm just trying to understand.
Understand, but I, my thought is, I'm not dictating to him anything about his garage.
Okay, so if he up and decided to move the garage closer to Pelton, you'd be okay with that?
That would have to be his, his department, that would have to manage that.
And what would happen is he'd be back in front of you?
And, so I'm not, I'm not getting the distinction between this one and any other one we see.
So, in my mind, the existing house is a stationary object, and the garage as proposed is three foot further back than the front plane of the existing house fronting Pelton. Um, and I suppose from a building point of view, you'd be, you know, you could come in with building plans that brought that to the full three feet, because it's really just that three foot, you know, that setback. Assuming that the, the, the building department inspects those plans, understands where the stationary, non-moving walls of the existing house are, and the plans do not, um, uh, you know, exceed that, and as they go out and do inspections, the building didn't grow, it's being built as per the approved plans, you know, in other words, there's a stationary point from which the building department is starting. In new home construction, uh, like the last case, it's, it needs placement verification because there is no benchmark, there's no stationary...
Haven't we done that with some of these add-on porches and decks, though, where we've required verification? I, I'm really trying to understand.
No, no, I think you're, I, you're, I think you're right there.
Yeah.
But that's an add-on. And it is a violation that we approved.
And we're approving it here in one of the sig-, one of the significant...
Not a garage.
No, well, no, one of the significant things is he's coming in for this garage, and we're relying on the fact that it's not going to make any of the existing setbacks any worse, any more in violation. And tell me, do we, do we require this as-built, as we have on so many others, or do we just rely on it administratively? I don't understand when the distinction...
How do you know where it sets right down? And he could add two more feet to the garage.
May I speak up? You still have an hour time hearing?
Hey man, you're trying to listen to...
The conversation is going on is, oftentimes, our committee will require you to do a, a survey, an actual placement verification of your house, okay?
Okay.
And my concern is, I'm asking you to spend more money, maybe, when I hate people to spend money when they don't have extra money. Um, so there's an issue here. If you have no problem doing a placement verification of where your house is, and where your new garage is, we can add that to the requirement. If you have a money concern about, it's an existing house and you're not moving it, and why would you spend more money, I will try and argue that point, but I need you to tell me that.
Um, I have a budget. This is my personal money, and I won't, I, I don't have a lot of funds.
And you're not the federal government, are you?
Yeah, and I...
Okay, so that's, so I am trying very hard to help this gentleman out, he's making a very nice house.
Uh, listen, I don't, I don't have any problem with the rationale, I'm trying to understand the distinction, not just for this, but for going forward. And I haven't heard that distinction made before based on somebody's budget. Everybody wants to save money, and I have no notion what one of these costs. Jim?
Right. No, it's, it's, I appreciate what Mr. Wallace is doing, is we're trying to create consistency and process, so I appreciate that, um, and I do not have a good answer, because you bring up a fair point of other cases where we're putting out a, a porch on an existing house, we still ask for a placement verification, um...
But porch, in my mind, the porch is in question, though.
Because the porch itself is the part that is asking for the variance.
You're talking about the porch here?
No, in, in previous examples...
In general.
So, in previous examples, and I think this is, in my mind, is the answer, in previous examples, we have a house that is not in violation, and the new addition is causing the violation in the variance request, and therefore has to conform.
I get your point, but while the garage isn't, uh, creating the problem here, A, it could, if it wasn't built properly, and B, we're all relying on the fact that it was away from these variances, so it wouldn't be a problem. That's part of the rationale that we've discussed.
But the porch itself, in those previous examples, caused, caused the violation?
I get, I get that.
In this case, if it's reviewed properly by our building department, which I have confidence it will be, and if it is a structure that is not causing any other violations on paper, it's truly the house that's causing the violations, and this garage, proposed garage is smaller, it's not coming up two, it's actually receding three feet, if, if it's, if it's drawn, if it's approved and it's inspected to meet that criteria, I think that is different than our previous example.
But I would always have that confidence in the building department.
Right, right.
So, again, why do we do that? What, uh, Brian, in, in order to get the building permits, would there need to be a survey?
Uh, no, not necessarily. Um, if, a plot plan can suffice, uh, it just depends on the detail in the plot plan. So it's, a survey is not required. Um, on these small lots, typically, they're gonna end up in front of the ZVA, so...
So these dimensions, we rely on from...
He's, I think he grabbed those off the aerial photography.
I think I'd make the motion that he couldn't expand the house any further towards Pelton or towards Drayton Street, and stay within the boundaries of...
Well, there's a motion that hasn't been seconded, I think, we didn't get a second.
Right.
Yeah, 'cause I wish...
We really should have the discussion after the seconded.
Well, I, okay, I could, if we're doing it in a logical order, I guess we would need a, a second.
Why don't you reiterate your motion?
My, my motion is, in case twenty-five dash one-six, that the petitioner be granted both variances related to the front yard setbacks, and the practical difficulty is based on, the house is older and it was built pre-current, uh, dimensional requirements, and that is it at this point.
Legal lot of record? For the small lot?
All right, hang on. We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
All right, Alan, did you have discussion on the motion?
I just was saying, because it's a legal lot of record and it makes it hard, a difficult building site, with the setbacks off of Pelton, but it's...
You're clarifying the point of it being a non-conforming...
Right.
Really not adding to the motion, but making a clarification.
Yeah.
All right, is there any additional discussion on the motion?
I guess, um, maybe we could add, uh, that he doesn't make, uh, any of the non-conformances greater than what they already are.
Let's, let's try and learn from the last one, keep this more formal, so you're making a motion to amend the motion on it?
Just this, I guess, by adding that, that whatever he does doesn't increase or make worse the, uh...
Non-conformances.
Non-conformances that we have now.
Okay.
I'll support that.
Any other amendments to the motion?
Just talking out loud, uh, Mr. Wallace, the, what triggered this was him getting a permit, not necessarily the garage.
What was the permit for?
House renovations and an addition of the garage.
Okay. I suspect if he was only doing house renovations, he wouldn't have had to get a permit, he certainly wouldn't have a variance.
I, I don't know.
Uh, you need a permit for siding and windows, and roofs.
Okay.
I guess my point about the, uh, that increasing the non-conformances might be a formality to stay within our consistency, as opposed to...
Right. I think it's, I think it's a fair point, and that's why I'm asking for additional amendments, if we wanna add that as an amendment, that certainly is, is open for discussion, and I think, in a broader sense, it highlights the fact that, that we should consider, uh, you know, more consistent policies of, of, as we make motions, we've talked about this just in the past, as well as some of those, those verifications, we certainly have the ability to, to make that, uh, one hundred percent, or in certain situations, um, you know, depending on those triggering mechanisms, where they are. But, um, let's take care of the business at hand, we can make more amendments if we want, so let's vote on an amendment, uh...
I'll support the amendment.
You'll support the amendment, so let's vote, uh, on the amendment, um, which was not making any of the, uh, existing front yard setbacks...
Worse.
Worse than they are now, or in, in, infringing more than they are now.
Uh, Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
No.
Mr. Zurich?
Yes.
Mr. Auger?
Yes.
Mr. Eppen?
Yes. Okay, now let's go back to the original, unless there's any additional discussion on the motion on the table. Let's go to the motion then, the original motion, Brian, do you have those points that you could read back to us, please?
I believe it's, uh, this, to approve the variances requested, as, as advertised, based on the fact that it, the lot predates our ordinance, the home predates our ordinance, um, there is no variances ever given for this home, so, uh, and it's not to make the non-conformities any worse than they already are.
Okay. Could we have, that was seconded, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Wallace?
No.
Mr. Zurich?
Yes.
Mr. Auger?
Yes.
Mr. Eppen?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
All right, great. Uh, thank you, Mr. Hawley, um, appreciate you working through that with us, uh, you've gotten approved, uh, improvements as, as you presented them tonight, as well as the addition of a garage. Obviously, uh, it's important to the township and to the community that, that garage doesn't grow, that it's built as presented, and obviously your drawings, working with the building department, getting your permits and inspections will reflect that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Be a nice improvement.
Yes.
Feel it good right there.
This house was built in nineteen forty-one, I don't think it's done anything since.
It's nice to see that, it's terrific.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, case number twenty-five dash zero-one-seven, Timothy Warner, petitioner requesting a thirty-foot rear yard setback variance from section five point zero-six A-four, uh, table five si-, point zero-six-two, in order to construct a new accessory structure on a combined lot, uh, which is at ninety-three sixty-four Ellis Road, uh, which is, uh, lot combination is in process, so we're really not here to talk about the combination, just simply the location of the variance request of a thirty-foot rear setback variance from the R-one-R rural residential. Typically, a setback in R-one-R is seventy-five foot setback, you're asking for a thirty-foot variance, meaning that the building is proposed to be forty-five foot from the side yard. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, if you could give us your name and address, please.
Timothy Warner, nine-three-six-four Ellis Road, Clarkston.
Appreciate it. What do you have going on, Mr. Warner?
Um, yes, just as you read, my wife and I wanna build a structure shed slash barn. Uh, the place we wanna put it is just a little within your requirement of seventy-five feet, uh, from our eastern property line, I'm just asking for a variance to, um, you know, snug it in there a little bit, uh, for, you know, certain reasons, you know, if we did go with the seventy-five feet all the way in, there's some trees there that we'd have to, you know, take out, which we don't wanna do, um, as you can see, the topography of it begins to, you know, slope down, we don't wanna, you know, obviously, build it crooked, or have to excavate more ground and, you know, create drainage issues later on, um, and/or even kinda disturb the, you know, tree root base around the trees of where it's at, so we're just asking that we, uh... So we're just asking that we can tuck it back into the woods there a little bit. I mean, it's heavily wooded there along that property line, even though that is the official line. I don't think it would be encroaching on ours. You can see the neighbor's yard is, or his houses, can't even see his house from it, but, you know, so we're just asking that we can set it back there a little bit.
It's a thirty by thirty-foot shed. Tell us, like, what architecturally, height, distance, everything?
Jim, should we even be hearing this case tonight? That he's building this, if this is a combined, combined lot, is that the way we're looking at it? Because he's building on a, a lot that's presently, if it went forward, there's no structure on it. But at the front yard off of Radley Lake Road.
He's in the rear yard.
But off of Radley Lake Road, he's got a double, he's a corner lot when it's combined. We had this.
When it becomes a, in front of the primary structure.
Bee- oh, is that Allen Road or? Off of Radley Lake Road, it was west of fifteen, where he built in a accessory structure. And his lot went all the way over to the, was it Allen Road?
Back in Bitter Bush or one of those?
Yeah, yeah.
Explain the concern again?
To the front yard setback.
If it's a combined lot, it goes, Radley Lake is, is now its, one of its two frontage roads. And therefore, the shed, not only would, the accessory structure would be in front, in front of the front yard in addition to a side yard variance request.
Yeah.
It's up to the board.
So it is, it is a combined lot technically?
I think they, you've applied.
Applied, yes.
But it can't take effect till the first of the year. Lot combinations are only done once a year at the beginning of the year.
And this could be conditioned on then a successful combination.
So e- even if we move it up, even with the existing pole barn, he's got a violation on January first or whenever this.
Well, the, the placement of it is on the vacant lot anyway.
I'm sorry, what would be the violation of the, being in front of the pole barn?
Well, in fact, even then, your pole barn would technically become in violation of the ordinance, similar to what we just said, saw in the last cases. Is the pole barn right now is fine because it's in relationship to the front yard house, front Ellis Road. When you combine your lots, technically now, the pole barn will also be in front of your house in relationship to Radley Lake, to the south.
So we don't combine the lots then?
Well, then you're.
Would that be easier? I mean, you just tell me, I'll.
Then you're building an accessory structure on a structure without a primary residence, which I don't think is permitted either.
I actually have no problem with this if it was a combined lot, which it's not right now.
Right.
And even after, it could be split, so that would be a condition, that it remain a combined lot. But I have no problem with that front yard setback, and I think could make a variance from that. And the reason is, it's A, so far away, and B, is buffered by a wetland that covers almost that whole frontage. So the idea, the idea of not having a structure in a frontage is aesthetic, and I don't think you have an aesthetic problem there.
The problem, once you allow this much of a setback variance, it could encroach with another structure if it met the square foot requirements and things.
You're ahead of me on that one. I have to understand that one better.
Yeah, I don't understand it either.
Well, you're, you're moving the rear yard setback towards the.
To the east.
East property line is what you're doing. And that would stay in effect up and down the whole.
I, I was just initially addressing your concern that it's in the front yard setback, right? Separating apart from anything else.
Okay.
I'm saying I don't have a problem with that aspect of it.
Well, and we didn't in the other cases either, because it was thousand foot off of, let's say, Allen Road.
Right.
I can't remember the road.
But provided these were combined and weren't going to be split again in the future, I don't have any problem with that front yard setback. Now, a side yard setback, or is that a rear yard setback? I guess it's a rear yard setback.
It's a rear.
It's a rear yard setback. And what's, I don't see with respect to that, where the practical difficulties is. So in other words, sort of backwards, I'm fine with the remedy, but I'm not sure where the trigger is.
So.
And I don't feel the seventy-five foot is required because the lot is, if you've been out to this lot, all the trees are way back at the property line, they're scattered big trees, but topographic, for Independence Township, this, to me, this is basically a flat lot. When you, when you're standing on Ellis Road at this second driveway that went to this lot.
But again, that directs, that addresses the nature of the remedy and not the trigger for.
So let me, so one, one thing that.
Well, the practical difficulty.
One thing that we've done, like in the last case, is even when something isn't egregious, we still try and right side the ordinance and right side the record book. The last house was an existing house, was stationary, but we had to bring into, bring it into compliance through granting a variance. In this case, we've kind of identified, Alan's identified, the fact that the combination of the lots would trigger this proposed structure, as well as the pole barn, to ultimately have to come for a, a variance request to say, hey, it's an unusual condition. We created a new front yard, now we, if we're going to be consistent, have to enter into the record for this parcel that it now has one and possibly two structures that are in violation of the accessory structure in the front yard. So at the very least, we'd have to, and, and that hasn't been advertised, so we'd have to go through that whole thing. I'd question if we do that, and if the lots are combined, and we somehow accept an accessory structure in the front yard, I'd make the argument then that this, if I've got my directions right, is it east, at least to the right side of the page? Isn't, it's no longer a rear yard, it's a side yard. A side yard has a fifty-foot setback, we want to put a forty-five foot. You could probably slide it five feet, and now you don't even need a variance for that, but you would need a variance for the accessories in the front yard.
And again, another notion about that remedy or that issue is, I think that we should be encouraging in this particular part of the township with this zoning, a combination of these lots. So to say, as he said a moment ago, well, they're telling me not to combine them. No, 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 I don't want to do that, because now I've taken away, I've taken away a building site, and I'm coming up to the. Again, I'm guessing these lots were split before the current zoning. Isn't the zoning, what's the zoning there?
R one R.
Huh?
R one R. So they're two conforming lots, they must have been split at some point.
But, but I'm confused. What, what is your concern about splitting them or leaving them split or combining them?
I'd like to see them combined because I think it's consistent with that part of the community.
Okay.
Larger lots.
I think, I think I agree with that, and I like the idea that if we ask the petitioner to move it up a little bit, because it's now a side yard?
Well, a side yard is permitted to have a structure fifty foot away from it. This is forty-five.
Right, and so we would ask them, we, would we be asking the applicant to come back next month, re-advertise this as a combined lot, and ask him to move this up five feet, and he doesn't?
Move it west.
And then, and then the petition would have to ask for two structures that are in front of the house.
That's, that's mechanically what I think would have to happen.
But it, but I, yes, but I would just ask if there is a rush, or can we wait till these are actually combined?
Well, I kind of wanted to do it this fall before the winter time.
Wants to build it.
It won't, wouldn't make the combination in January or so?
Yeah, then we have a real significant problem, though.
You can't legally, you mean?
Yeah, because he's building, well.
You can't build an accessory.
Again, it'd be another variance because he'd be, he's building on a, a lot that doesn't have a primary residence on it.
And they can't get the lot combined until after the first of the year.
Right.
Well, there's no way around that. I mean, we can't say, give him three variants, a few, two future ones for the front yard? No?
Well, it's out of our control, right? Right? If, what if the assessor or the county or someone said, you know what?
Oh, you can't do it.
We're not going to do it, and then all of a sudden, he's got a built shed on there, and then.
And then he's.
Well, in the, in the, in these particular points, the assessor doesn't look at, they don't talk to the, the assessor just does combinations. They don't, they don't look at the zoning aspect.
Or not do them.
Yeah. Well, basically, yeah, it's, they basically sign off and it goes to the county, and then at a certain point, there'll be a combination.
So it would.
At the first of the year.
My guess is it'd be unlikely it wouldn't be combined, but it would be a leap of faith, I think, for us to approve and maybe set a, you know, set an example that, that we don't want to proliferate throughout the community of granting thirty by thirty-foot sheds on individual parcels. But back to the, so if this was advertised differently, if this was advertised to grant approval for an existing accessory structure and consider approval for an additional accessory structure in front of a home with the condition that it doesn't take effect until after the lots are combined.
Then you can't build this year.
Then you can't build this year.
Yes, you have a, I don't know if you're following.
A little bit, yes.
Yeah. So do you have a problem, you think, with moving this structure five feet to the west?
No, five feet would still work, yeah.
That's important to know, I think.
So, so now we would ask.
He wouldn't be back for that variance at all.
So, so now we would ask the petitioner to come back next month for a.
No, I don't think so.
He doesn't have a combined.
Well, he could come back and we would potentially consider it conditioned on, like, he could, he could check that box anytime between now and January first.
Sure, he just wouldn't be able to build.
Correct.
Now, all right, he could come back and say he wants a twenty-five yard rear yard setback and permission to put a structure on an empty lot?
He could.
I don't know, I don't know.
Would you be.
Is that something that goes before our board?
Yeah, absolutely, it does.
Would you be granting that?
We would be allowing him to build.
What if the, but.
But what if the, the division or the combi, the combination doesn't go through?
Exactly.
That's the case?
Yep.
Okay?
So even if we see it next month, we're not able to.
But, but let's say, let's say it gets rejected.
He's not able to build.
Let's say he can't combine it. We still gave him permission to build it.
Do we want to do that?
But you wouldn't do it if it was.
I, I, I think it's a low-risk combination, and I think because of what we've been talking about, the wetlands, I think it's not really a front yard kind of, you know, it, it, yes, it's a front yard, but it's not anywhere near that roadway and.
Well, let's, you know.
And there's a, it's a, it's not. I mean, thirty by thirty shed, it's a fair size, but, I mean, even if somebody does build there someday.
Is this a lot to the north, is this something you acquired recently?
Three years ago, two thousand twenty-three, yeah.
Was it part of your original purchase?
Yep.
Oh.
So, um, let's go back to some just basic questions about the shed. What, what, what are you going to keep in there? You've already got a decent-sized pole barn.
Uh, well, we'll probably store some things in there. Um, my stepdaughter's really into dance, so, you know, she wants a little, her own area for dancing and, and performing, and she's trying to get a, you know, collegiate scholarship, all of that, you know. And, you know, it was, you know, I'm going to put a nice little portrait, I don't know where the picture went, but.
Make sure the picture.
So it's going to be.
It's a nice area to watch a sunset, I'm getting older, and I'd love to, you know, have a nice spot to, you know, relax. But for the most part, just to have another area to kind of get away.
Is it, is it going to have a restroom in it?
No, no, we're not, we're not, no septic, no nothing like that. We're just going to run, you know, power out of it.
Is it, no, it's not, is it going to be used for Airbnb or vacation home or?
No, nothing, no.
No, no, no one's going to reside in it, even on a short-term basis?
Nope.
Is, so, so other than it's pretty cool and it'd be really nice to have, is there any reason, you know, other than I've got time and capacity to build it now, I'd like to build it now? Is there any reason that we can't do this in order to combine the lots and then consider the variance either before that, so it all rolls together at one time?
At the end of the day, no, I'd say no. I mean, I'm, I'm here, and I told Brian, you know, I'm here to do things the right way. Want to come and ask, you know, what's the right way to do it, where my variance is, I don't want to break any rules. And, you know, the older I get tomorrow, I try to follow the rules, so, you know, no, I mean, but, but I did, you know, I, I was trying to hope to get it up before winter time, but.
Sure.
I hope you appreciate the problems we run into.
I understand, I do. That's why I'm here, yes, yes.
Well, and I'll, and I'll be honest, I.
Watched the two prior cases.
I, I, a thirty-foot side yard variance on a, I'm sorry, a rear yard, a thirty-foot rear yard variance on a property this size is difficult for me because, you know, is there, is there a better place to put it? Potentially, where if that building can be moved five foot, that that gets redefined as a side yard, therefore no variance. You've already got an existing pole barn, potentially you might have another structure on a big piece of property. That, that to me is more bringing the property into compliance as it relates to paperwork. And so, so, you know, it's a little bit of semantics, but it, it does bring that whole barn to the correct location as it relates to our variance. In my mind, and I appreciate what you're saying, I, I haven't in the time that I've been on this board kind of gotten the cart before the horse in terms of approving accessory structures on properties that don't have a home and frankly, don't have plans to build a home. If this was a lot that said, hey, we're going to build our home next, next June, we've already got our permits in, but this winter, we'd like to get the garage up just so we can build our, put our building materials in there. To me, that's a little different. In this case, there, there is no plan for an additional home. So if it remains a separate parcel, then it's, it's really unusual to the township in terms of having accessory structure.
Point of clarification, we don't have it, there's two different survey drawings here, and the one that shows the proposed structure doesn't show the property line.
Yes, sorry, the second drawing is the combined.
Right, so.
Would, would the structure actually be on the line or?
It's hard.
You can see the fence for like that, it's probably a pasture for, for some animals or something, but that fence is right on the line.
The fence is right on the line.
See the little, little squares?
Oh, wait, now this one.
Yeah, you go down that and you see.
And two screens now.
Fence stand right here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is pretty much at the line.
I was going by this is the line?
That's pretty close to where the line is if you.
Property line is on the fence line, correct. So this is probably five or seven feet north of that.
So, so, I mean, this is so close.
If you look at the topographic, uh, projection there, the eleven twenty-six, and then you drop down to the lower, uh, picture, and you pick up the eleven twenty-six.
Line.
You see where the structure is.
Yeah.
Sitting north of the property line.
No, I don't.
I'm sorry.
Well, right now, do we agree we can't do anything on this today?
I believe that's the case, although we can give the, the applicant better direction and we can begin to figure out how we're going to treat this or what, what we're going to look at when it comes back. Would be unfair not when we're sitting here to give him that kind of direction.
Yes, but there's two options to come back. Option number one is he's got to wait until they're combined.
Depends on the structure, I wouldn't result that badness.
Well, what I'm getting at, what I'm getting at with trying to figure out where the property line is relative to the proposed structure is.
It appears that the proposed structure is on the second piece of property.
Correct. What if it was on the first, on the main piece of property, the southerly piece of property?
Then it would be in the rear yard totally if it was. And the side, it'd be on the north side of the house.
Rear yard or a side yard? Rear yard or a side yard?
No, that would be the rear yard.
Well, yeah. But if you consider this, frontage, then you could call it side.
Let's, let's, let's come back to this. Let me try and grab onto something here. Is, there's a lot of different pieces in motion. I heard the applicant say, boy, it'd be great, but I'm willing to wait till next year. If, in my mind, to do, you know, assuming that the applicant has looked at the property and said, this is the ideal location, plus or minus five feet for this building, I don't have to take down that fence, I'm willing to wait till the spring, the application has already been made for the combination, it most likely will go into effect January 1st, whether you want to wait till the first meeting of January, or you want to do it next month, or December, you could come back here. I personally would feel comfortable making a motion conditional upon a combination of the property. If the combination fell through, then we could revisit the whole situation and come up with different alternatives. I haven't seen justification other than convenience to build an accessory structure on an individual piece of property, and the applicant frankly isn't asking for that at this point, so I'm inclined to table this and ask the township and the applicant to consider a different variance request, and that would be accessory structures in the front yard, with the assumption that the combination goes through.
Okay.
But that's...
What did you say? Would you clarify what you meant when you said you don't see a justification?
I don't see a, either a request, an application, or a practical difficulty to allow an accessory structure on an individual piece of property that doesn't have a primary residence and has no plans for a primary residence.
So you don't see the practical difficulty in that?
I haven't, I haven't been, I haven't been, and no one's requested that.
No, the whole front yard setback thing just came up here at the meeting, so...
Right.
And it's not necessarily a front yard setback, it's an accessory structure in front of primary.
Yeah, in front of the primary.
And I guess if he came back after the split or the combination, you'd still want it to be 50 foot in, right, from the property?
To me, that would make sense. To me, that would make sense. It'd be hard, you know, unless we went out there and you've got just a landmark oak tree that's preventing it from sitting those five feet.
I'm just saying, he could actually adjust that figure.
Correct.
If, if he's going to ask for the front yard variance, is what I'm getting at.
Right, and to the point, it's not, it's a, it's an accessory structure in the front yard, not a dimensional setback.
Right, right.
Did, did you guys visit this site?
No.
Yes.
I've been by.
This is from Ellis Road a hundred times. You see, it's pretty bare, and the big trees are scattered. I think he can locate that 30 by 30 somewhere in that, those big trees. The heavy dents is back on the east property line.
Mr. Warner, I want to make sure I try and put some words in front of you and, and ask you to see if you understand it, but it sounds like what we're starting to lean toward is you, asking you to wait until it's actually combined.
Yep.
And then come in front of, become in front of us again to get, I believe, only two variances at that time, if it's combined, that the existing pole barn and the new structure is in the front yard, and do we approve that?
Too close to be a variant.
Those would be the only two requirements, because he moved it in five feet, so it's no longer in violation.
Couple of questions for you, Brian. Am I interpreting that that would have then become a side yard?
There's no other...
And therefore 50 foot.
Unless he puts it here in front of the house.
It would become the most conforming form of the lot.
Okay. And then the second question is, do we permit two accessory structures in the front yard through a variance?
Well, yes, he's over an acre, so he's allowed two accessory structures.
Okay.
And I think I've already done the calculations. He's got plenty of square footage to work with for his accessory structure, so it's not, that's not an issue.
So your, your questions, can those, that would be accurate?
So I want to repeat it again to you, sir.
And to me, I want to keep up too.
So what I believe we're asking you to do is to delay your request until it's combined.
Okay.
And then you would be requesting for two variances, and they would be related to the existing pole barn, and the new shed that you're going to move five feet farther off the back of your property, which is going to be a side yard setback after they're combined. And you have to understand that when you do come back, it's not necessarily approved. I mean, we would have to have the conversation again and then approve it. Now, I have no idea, right now, I have no heartache on what you're doing, and I don't know what everybody else's opinion is, but that's an opinion. Until it comes before the board and we rule, it's not approved. Does that make sense? I'm trying to tell you, it's a two-step, it's two thoughts that you really should be understanding. One is, it has to be combined, and two, we have to approve it again.
Gotcha.
Well, it's a different variance.
Yes.
And, and we've focused on, not irrationally, we've focused on, again, the remedy, what the outcome will be. And I said it from the beginning, I'm fine with it because of the rationale that the, there's plenty of land between that and, and the north of the road, and there's that big wetland. So, but the question still is, what's the practical difficulty?
Well, in this case, again, we're not looking for a location to justify the shed as it relates to the 50-foot site, because, so there will be no violation, it'll be in conformance.
Correct.
We have a pretty substantial track record on the ZBA for larger lots, typically with a setback on a, on a single-family R1A neighborhood. We have setbacks, and more often than not, those homes are built where you would expect them, right up to the front setback line. So it's very, very unusual and almost difficult to put an accessory structure. In this case, we've got essentially the same-sized setbacks, a little bigger because it's rural, but it's not at all atypical to put a home in different areas, not up against the front setback yard. So the ZBA has had an awful lot of occasion to consider and has approved many accessory structures, because the home is put in an atypical place. It's not put up in the front, there's excessive land in front, and therefore it's, it's, many applicants have come forward and shown why, hey, if my home was in front, I could build the barn in the exact same place, it's just that my home was built in, in an atypical location, and therefore we're still requesting that.
And sometimes per test.
So the practical difficulty could be nothing, sort of oddly, that it is a large lot?
It was a large lot, and the home was built in the wrong spot, or in an atypical spot.
Okay.
Okay. So come back, see you guys. Would it be January, so we, we, what do the, if it gets combined in January, so February 1st would be the, or roundabouts?
Would the lot be approved, subject to taking effect January 1st by the township, or?
I believe the county approves them effective first, but I'd have to get clarification from the assessor.
Check, keep in touch with Brian.
My, my opinion, and I welcome yours, I, it's like the, the second, I'd like it advertised correctly, so we've tried to change the variance, and so I'd like it advertised correctly. For me, if it came back in November or December, and it was advertised as such as we've discussed, and we considered it and made the determination, and one of the conditions I would put on it, if that was the case, is that it would not, the variance would not take effect until, if and until the lots were combined. So you could essentially do them in parallel. In my mind, just everything would, would not take effect, and if for some reason the county said, hey, we're not going to approve that, then that variance would, would essentially fall apart, and you wouldn't, you frankly wouldn't need it. You'd still have to figure out your location of the shed, but at least of the pole barn was still in compliance as it relates to Ellis Road.
Okay.
And then hopefully early spring.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is this one, again, just to, to better understand, is this one where we are going to say you'll need a conforming survey?
It's a great question. Again, in my mind, yes, because it's a freestanding structure, it's not tethered to an existing building, and that 30 by 30, you know, could be almost anywhere. So the distance of 50 foot from that property line will be critical, so at least that point would have to be surveyed and verified by the building department.
With Keith engineering already doing the survey, to go out and stake it or whatever wouldn't be that costly to him. They've got their points.
Yeah.
I would suggest that we don't need a, a motion, just that the record would reflect that we made a determination not to make a decision at this time, and suggested to the applicant that there be, he'd consider a different variance at a different time. I don't think we need to do a motion.
That's a good motion.
Mm-hmm.
I'll support that.
That could be a motion, I guess. It's really just a motion to postpone, yeah.
So we have a motion to postpone, we have support.
Postpone and re, redirect or rewrite, or not?
It's up to him.
Okay, never mind. Yep. So, keep going.
All in favor of postponement?
Aye.
Opposed? No. We're postponed, sir. Appreciate you working through that with us.
Sorry.
I think it's, I think it's, as it relates to especially the fact that you're already combining, it, I think it's the right administrative procedure for the township. Appreciate it.
So I'd be willing to do what's right.
Because it'll please...
We're trying to do the same.
Yeah.
You mentioned twice, though, that you're getting old, you're like, you're, like you're doing all right, so no rush.
Unless somebody's got changes to the minutes, I'll make a motion to approve the meaning minutes of September 3rd, 2025, as presented.
Support. We have motion, support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motive minutes of September 3rd are approved. Gentlemen, we're on the record, we have, our open meeting, we have discussion, any discussion? First of all, Alan, thank you for thinking through that accessory.
Yeah.
I didn't think of that, and I think it was the right awareness, so appreciate all of us thinking of those letters. Neil, I think you bring up some really, really good points, and, and we as a group, I think, are doing well in terms of being consistent, thinking through these motions and everything. I don't have a clear answer. I think in my mind, I understand, I use the term tethered, or, you know, it has a benchmark of an existing structure. I also want to keep thinking through, but I think there's, there's some logic in my mind that it, you know, the difference between our, our previous porch and the, the second or third case there, is that it was tied to an existing structure, the variance, and the, the new structure wasn't, it was triggering the variance request, but it wasn't causing the variance request, and maybe, I want to continue to think that. But I do, your, your point is, is not lost on me, that I think we as a board have to think about those consistencies, and in, in my mind, you know, I'm constantly struggling with dollars and cents. I don't know that it's our job to make a motion. I think if, if, if we settle in on some type of...
Cost should not be a predicate of...
Cost should not...
A predicate of any decision we make.
Agreed. And, and if, if we're being consistent in our application, regardless of a large cost or a small cost, I think our job is to be consistent in our application, to think those through, and we'll get them.
It's a requirement that, again, just coming on the ZBA earlier in the year, it's a requirement that I saw routinely being added in.
Yes.
So I'm trying to understand it, because it's not something I was aware of.
And I agree, consistency is very important, okay, but added burden to homeowners in this township should not be put on their shoulders, and that's an added burden in this case. The gentleman was handwriting everything, he was trying to do it as fair as he could, and at a very cost-effective. And I heard you, you say, cost is not our concern, but putting extra burden on our constituents is not what we should be doing.
Well, I don't know that there are constituents, there are certainly citizens of our community.
Oh, sorry, yes, better term.
But, no, I, I still, I would disagree with you. I, I don't think that cost is a consideration. I want to encourage somebody like that to improve their property.
Yes.
But I think it is important to be consistent, that people need to do what they say they're going to do. And if we're going to rely on the building department sometimes, maybe we're relying on them all the time, rather than putting additional burden on anybody. Because cost is either a consideration for some or for all.
Should be consistently the same.
Yeah. And that's, that's the point, is if, if, if another applicant was coming in for a standalone shed, regardless of the, the size of the property or the location of the property, if it was right down to the wire, or we're giving them that variance, I think we have been consistent, saying yes, that...
We want evidence.
In, in this case, again, I'll go back to that, I think it was unusual, not unusual, because we've done it before, but the, the fact that the, the variance was being triggered by the existing structure, and that the application, as long as it's built according to as it's presented...
But according to the way it's presented is always what we're after.
And that's what the building department always...
Fundamentally, their job.
So then we don't need that in the, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's, 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 I've, I've got to do some additional thinking on if it's, and maybe it's just a, across-the-board application that we always do that.
Well, we never do. And we rely on the building department.
We rely on them to do it when there's no variation or no variance.
Yeah, we're going to disagree on that.
That's fine, and I have no problem with that.
It still drives us to come up with a consistent methodology, so.
Well, with no more discussion, I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:42.
Alan's hungry. We have motion to adjourn. I will support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.